All right, good evening, everyone. Time is 6:30 on September the 21st, 2021. This regular meeting of Mayor and Council is now called to order. Roll call, all are present, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that.
Lord Jesus, we thank you so much for another great day. And Lord, we thank you for just the weather that's changing and the fall that's quickly approaching. But we thank you for the opportunity we had tonight to gather together and to talk about city business and the things that are going on in our community. Lord, we pray that you give us wisdom, you give us guidance, you give us strength for us to know what is right and the direction that we need to walk in. And so, Lord, I pray that you would shine your favor on this community and that you would give us your grace. That's your name and prayer.
Thank you, Nathan. Susan, did you print the announcements? I don't have them. All right, announcements for this evening. We've got a Tree Board meeting, September the 23rd at 6:00 PM in the Community Room. Got a Planning Commission meeting, October the 27th, 6:00 PM at Social Circle Theater. Our next council work session is October 7th, 6:30 PM in this Community Room. Main Street Commission meeting, October 12th, 8:00 AM, Church at the Grove. Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, October the 12th, 10:00 AM, that's a Zoom call. Historic Preservation Meeting, October the 12th, 6:00 PM, City Hall. Social Circle Development Authority Meeting, October the 14th, 3:00 PM, City Hall. Downtown Development Authority Meeting, October the 14th, 1:00 PM, also at City Hall. Our next council meeting, October the 19th, 6:30 PM in this Community Room. All right, presentations. First up, we have the Walton County Chamber presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, as you all know, you approved our contract on a three-year basis last year. But just wanted to come and give you all a quick update of what's been going on. So I often get asked, what is the Chamber of Commerce? And that answer is different for every business, every professional, and in different communities. To some, we are a resource for network and marketing. To some, we are a place where business and community come together. And to many, we are an advocate and voice for their business. We have many initiatives and programs to help our communities prosper, and we focus on helping our members, our member businesses thrive. We bring together partnerships that bring value to our member businesses, and they love the connections we provide for them to build relationships with like-minded businesses throughout Walton County. Local chambers matter in communities. We stay up to date on community and business issues and set an annual business plan to manage and influence those that we can. I have had the opportunity to work for the Walton County Chamber for 26 years and feeling like you make a difference in your home community and helping local businesses is definitely a passion of mine. We help local businesses thrive through social media workshops, keeping them up to date, all of 2020 on EIDL loans, PPP loans, hosting workshops virtually on both of these programs and more. Also, last year, as you all recall, we were, we received a Facebook grant for small businesses in the amount of $175,000, and we were able to award 74 Walton County businesses with funding to help them stay open during the pandemic. Many of them cried when we delivered the checks to them. So we were, we were glad to be able to be part of that process. To make sure even our non-member businesses stayed open, we have the Walton Strong page. You all feel free to post to that at any time. If you have anything going on in the Social Circle community, feel free to post on that Walton Strong group Facebook page. We have managed the SPOLOX campaign for the cities and the counties for 20-plus years. We know how much you all depend on the SPOLOX dollars for infrastructure projects in the city, and I'm sure we'll manage the next one, too. We're getting ready to run the ELOS campaign. We also manage political candidate forums, and we're working with your two candidates that have race opposition to try to have a virtual option for them so that the voters are educated when they get ready to make that vote. We produce a high-quality Walton County magazine. That's what I just gave you all. I wanted you all to make sure you saw that. And Tyson's featured in there under People, Places, and Personalities. So we appreciate him being part of that magazine for us last year. We produce the Walton County map. Believe it or not, people still ask for a printed map, which kind of blows my mind because I just put things in my phone in my GPS. But some people still want that printed map. Those are great, both great tools for promoting businesses and new residents in Walton County. We still manage all of the following programs. Adult Leadership Walton Program. We're happy to have Amber in this year's program. We also have Dr. Robbie Hooker in this year's program. So we're glad to have both of them in the class this year. The Youth Leadership Walton Program for juniors and seniors. Walton Proud Promotions, which we, you know, Social Circle is part of that initiative as well. And then, of course, our Local Campaign, trying to encourage people to shop local, which again helps with the sales tax dollars here. And finally, as new residents and new businesses visit many times, the Chamber is the first impression for them. So it's important that we have and maintain a professional welcoming office and staff for our community. This past year, after launching our first-ever capital campaign, we have raised over 50% of our goal to purchase our office building and enhance our community programs. We do plan to ramp up the ask of the capital campaign in November as people are looking at any tax donations they might want to make before year end and hope to have the other half raised by this time next year. We have 664 members. We have 27 members in the 30025 ZIP code. Obviously, all of those are not in the Social Circle city limits. So Social Circle members make up about 4% of our membership. And I know we've been working with Amber to try and, try and increase that number, especially in the downtown area, so that we can promote those businesses a little bit more. We have a new event coming up in Social Circle. It's the Pals and Pals BFF 5K. So bring your best pal or, or pal friend and, and join us. It's right before the Friendship Festival. So we, we planned it for then so that people would stay for the festival afterwards. So we'll finish up the race about 9:45, and the festival starts at 10:00. If any of you want to volunteer, we're looking for volunteers. I know we've asked the Mayor and Penny to drive, have a mobile water cart for anybody that needs water. So they're going to drive the golf cart around the course. And so if anybody else would like to help, we've got plenty of opportunities for you to help. Just let me know. But we do appreciate your support for our annual contract and our capital campaign. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do you have a question?
Yes, um, if you'd like to volunteer.
You can just tell me your name, just pass me your name. I'll be right back there. Just give me your name and number, and I'll, I'll give you a call. How about that? That'll be good? Okay. You can also email me to eri@waltonchamber.org. I am going, I'm going to stay for a little bit, but Kelly's cheering tonight in Monroe. So I'm going to head out in just a little bit and go to her game. But I'm going to stay for a little bit of the meeting.
Thank you, Terry. Thanks for all you did in the Chamber.
Thank you all. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the employee introduction and recognition.
Mr. Mayor, I will recognize Robbie Groves, who will introduce new members of the Public Works Staff.
This is Lily Mweb, and she's one of our newest interns at the water treatment plant. Lily is currently enrolled at Georgia State for Sign Language. Lily is very excited to start her career in water treatment. She has currently completed her classwork for, become a Class III operator. Now she's getting her hands-on experience, and she's scheduled to take her test in late October.
Welcome. Do you want to say anything? Tell us a little about yourself.
Born and raised in Conyers, I'm 22. Have three older brothers. Majoring in Sign Language Interpretation because I just love signing, and I'd love to be a part of the deaf community, reaching out however I can. And yeah, like to help people, love to volunteer, and I'm always here if anybody needs me.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I recognize Chief Brinkley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to introduce three of our new members of the Police Department. Got to thank Mayor Keener, I've been keeping him busy this last week or so. I think I need to get a moldy, swearing in hand to keep. But we got one, Trevino, coming from us, coming to us from Cleveland, Georgia. One has about 14 years of experience as a police officer and want to make a change and chose Social Circle, so we're happy to have him here. Got Thomas Robertson, again, Cleveland, Georgia. Even here, one, they know each other, and they don't stay too far from each other in the Wyandotte area. So they want to come here and make a difference within Social Circle. And Agent, Agent Rup, 16 years from Newton County. She's our CID, so tons of experience, which we need there here with CID. I mean, she stays out on all kinds of scenes in Newton County, murder, rape, robberies and everything. Not, not, we try to keep it out of the circle we can. So you guys want to say anything?
I want to take the time to, to thank you all for letting me come here to Social Circle. I believe it's going to be a, a great change for me. Hopefully, I can bring the community relations back between us and the community. And I wish to talk to you all when I'm out and about patrolling. If you have any questions about me, I mean, I'm happy to talk. Just thank you for the opportunity that you all are giving me.
I want to thank you all for the opportunity you've given me. Like, I want to be out in the community. If I meet you out in the community, please stop to me, reach out, shake my hand. I like to learn about people.
As I said, thank you all for the opportunity to work with this agent. I'm just super excited to be here. So I look forward to working with Social Circle Police Department.
Great. Thank you all, and thank you for your service to our community.
These officers are the first ones to wear our new patch here, rebranding here. So Georgia, Greater Little Town, need to be known as Georgia, Greater Little Town.
Chief, if you don't mind, take a, take a couple of seconds and tell us about that new patch. I know you and I had a conversation about it the other day. It looks, looks great.
We, uh, when you, when you rebrand and rebuild and, you know, when I came here, May 4th of last year, I looked at the patch we had on the uniform, and nice-looking patch. But I want something that enhances the city. Now, police officers are the most visible people 24 hours, 7 days a week in any of our communities. And you need to be proud of the logo that you wear on your shirt. So I want to, had also inside the Police Department, I asked them to come up with a patch, come up with a design. We had an officer actually put one together and drew it out, and we sent off to a print company and came back with what you see there. And it still has the city well, and it has the dedication, honor, and integrity. As y'all know, this job is, everybody can't do this job. It's a job, it's a thankless job. Unfortunately, you got a lot going on, but you have to keep pushing through. So I think every member of, in the Police Department, especially Social Circle Police Department, ought to be proud when you put the uniform on, put the gun belt on, put the bulletproof vest on to come out here and serve and protect. Because when they leave their families, they don't know whether they're coming back home or not or what condition they're going to be in. So that's why the patch is here.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Chief. All right, Downtown Rundown.
Good evening. First on my rundown tonight is the Citywide Cleanup. The Alliance Club will be hosting the Citywide Cleanup this Saturday, September 25th, beginning at 8:00 AM, right here outside the Community Room. Participants can come and grab a biscuit and coffee before getting their street assignments and their supplies to go out and pick up trash. That's all being-
What time is that, Amber?
It starts at 8:00 AM. Mm-hmm. And that's all being done so we can get the town nice and clean before our 27th Annual Friendship Festival, which is Saturday, October 2nd, from 10:00 to 4:00. Registration ended on Friday, but we have had a steady stream of late applications coming in. But by all appearances, the festival will be full this year. We're pleased to welcome back the local radio station, Q92.3. April Les and Julio will be doing a live remote at the festival from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then, as Terry said, the Chamber is hosting the 5K, which will wrap up right before our opening ceremonies for our festival at 10 o'clock. Faith in Blue, Friday, October the 8th, in Friendship Park. The Police Department will be having their annual Faith in Blue event. This is organized by the Police Department Chaplain, and he's invited local pastors and citizens and community leaders. They're all invited to come and meet members of the Police Department, and then they'll have a time of prayer for all of our officers there. Georgia Cities Week is going to come up the week yet after Friendship Festival. That is October the 3rd through the 9th this year. And Social Circle will be participating, working with Fire Police and Public Works. We're hoping to host a City Vehicle Day for the local kids. And then I've partnered with the primary and elementary schools' art teacher for coloring contests. So they'll do a coloring contest for kindergarten to second grade, and then third to fifth grade will be doing an art contest. And the theme is "If I Were Mayor." So I'm sure we'll have, we'll have you, Mayor Keener, help us pick the winner for that.
Those will be some exciting pictures.
Yes, I can't wait to see what they come up with, especially in those grade levels. So it'll be interesting. And then we'll host a Fun Facts of the City scavenger hunt that will start at the Welcome Center. So that should be neat, that we have going on that week. And then the last on my list is Downtown Trick or Treating. We have the businesses that participate and host our annual trick-or-treating. This year, it's going to be on Friday, October 29th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And this year, we're also including businesses, clubs, and organizations that are outside of our downtown that may want to come and set up a trunk of treats and be a part of that, that celebration. So we'll give the kids more opportunity to get more candy for that. I'm sure the parents will love that. So anyone interested in participating and having a trunk can contact me at the Welcome Center for more information. And that's all I have.
Any questions, Amber? Thank you, Amber. All right, next on the agenda, we have citizens' requests. I don't know if anybody is here for, for that. We didn't have anyone sign up. Are there any citizen requests? Council requests? Hearing none, we'll move on to the agenda approval. I don't know of any, any changes, so I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, and a second from Councilmember Shelton. All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Financial statements?
Hello. So in an effort to not drag this out, since you all have already seen the June financial statements a few times now, we are still doing entries for fiscal year-end. So all of our revenues are where they should be, and all of our expenses are where they should be for general fund, water, and solid waste. Now, if we move to gas, you'll notice the expenses are higher than anticipated. That's an encumbrance issue that I have corrected since these financial statements were done. So you'll see that corrected on next month. So we can move on to August. All right, for general fund, our revenues are at 9.23%. This time last year, they were at 8.96%. I was working on a very small computer screen, so I'm sorry for that typo. Our expenses are at 16.07%. Of that was 36.6% capital and 15.49% operating. This time last year, we were at 17.41%. For water, our revenue is at 20.95%. We have not received any GFA funding for this fiscal year yet. So that's 25.55% of operating costs. This time last year, we were at 10%. For expenses, we are at 12.66%. Of that is 9.85% capital, 15.75% operating. This time last year, we were at 30.43%. For gas, our revenue is at 12.85%. This time last year, we were at 11.01%. For expenses, it's 10.41% overall. Of that, 10.17% is capital and 10.43% is operating. This time last year, we were at 16.58%. And then for solid waste, our revenues are at 16.81%. This time last year, we were at 16.54%. And our expenses are at 9.17%. This time last year, we were at 8.59%. So everything is where it should be at this point in time. Any questions?
Any questions?
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for the June financial report. Have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll also entertain a motion for the August financial report. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, if you'd just walk us through that, please.
Sure thing, Mr. Mayor. We have a fairly robust consent agenda this evening with 11 items on the agenda. The first item is the minutes of the Mayor and Council meeting of August 17th, 2021. Second item is approval of the minutes of the Mayor and Council work session from September 2nd, 2021. The third is the minutes of executive session that was held on September 2nd, 2021. And the fourth item is the minutes of the Mayor and Council Special Call Meeting that was held in this room on September 2nd, 2021. The next item we have is an authorization to amend the 2021-22 budget for reallocation of funds from the 2020-21 budget for training for new software. The city budgets funds in the FY21 budget for the Grantus website design and the transition from Interga to Tyler. But these projects were not completed during the last fiscal year but are targeted for completion this year. And this agenda item will simply just reallocate those funds. $8,000 for the website redesign and $15,150 for the Tyler transition from fund balance so that invoices can be paid once these projects are completed. The next item is the authorization to amend the 2021-22 budget for recently approved contractor service consulting. Council approved an agreement with CERES at the last meeting to advocate on the city's behalf at the state for, state-level funding for a wastewater treatment plant. And this item budgets $25,000 in the CIP expense account to cover these services. The next item is an authorization to add the city manager as an authorized user on the CDBG account at Pinnacle Bank. This was an item that, that was actually oversight inadvertently missed when changing signature authority on the city's accounts as part of the city manager transition. And this will add my name to the account and remove the previous city manager as an authorized user of this account. The next item is an authorization to amend the 2021-22 budget for the TAP Grant Sidewalk Project. The city has two active TAP grants. One is on North and South Cherokee, and one is on Spring Street, Divine Street. And those are both still in the concept phase. Funding was not included in this year's budget, leaving us unable to pay invoices for these projects. And so this, well, item will, will budget a total of $219,400 out of the 2019 SPOLOX, of which the city will be reimbursed for 80% of whatever we spend. The next item is an authorization to amend the 2021-22 budget for emergency repairs to meters at the water plant. As we discussed several times, the city experienced catastrophic failure to their raw and finished water meters at a water plant back in July, and we have since been operating under a temporary approval from EPD until we get these replaced. And so this item here will approve spending $97,903 in CIP for replacement of these meters. The next item is consideration of the Title VI policy for the GDOT Section 1311 Transit Grant. As part of a federal grant we received via GDOT to operate our transit system, the city is required to operate our transit programs and services without regard to race, color, and national origins in accordance with the Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. And so this item here will actually set the policies and procedures for those who may have a grievance, and tell them what to do, how to go about filing the grievance with the city. And the final item is a consideration of a resolution of support for the Downtown Development Authority of Social Circle to pursue an EPA grant. This was actually before this body last year. The DDA is seeking funds to transform the mill property, the Brownfield renovation project. And they did not get the grant last year, but they are resubmitting for that again this year. And this is simply a resolution in support of the DDA's efforts. And that is all on the consent agenda, and recommend approval.
I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just got a question. I wasn't at the one meeting. Is it all right to vote on it as a consent agenda, do it needs to, it's fine? Okay. No questions?
Any further discussion? All in favor indicate to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Old business, I don't know of any new business. Item number one, we've got a consideration of a resolution to recognize Georgia Cities Week, October 3rd through the 9th. I have that resolution here to read. It's a resolution of the City of Social Circle recognizing Georgia Cities Week, October 3rd through the 9th, and encouraging all residents to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas the city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct dating impact upon its residents. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Social Circle declares October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Georgia Cities Week. Be it further resolved that the City of Social Circle encourages all citizens, city government officials, and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly, passed and adopted by the City of Social Circle this 21st day of September, 2021. I'll entertain a motion. Have a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate to say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, Eric, will you bring us up to date on that one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. The City of Social Circle and Historic Preservation Commission recently issued a request for qualifications for a historic resources survey from consultants to conduct an intensive historic survey of approximately 441 parcels within the city limits of Social Circle. This project will be financed in part with funds from the National Park Service through the 2021 Historic Preservation Fund Grant. That's administered by the Georgia Historic Preservation Division. And the city received six, six bids from, from consulting firms. And the Historic Preservation Commission and our zoning administrator, Barbara Slagerter, have reviewed the bids and are recommending that we award the bid to NV5 with a bid price of $14,524.83. I will also add that one of the reasons why this particular firm was chosen is because their proposed project manager is a native of Social Circle. And the committee felt like that would be a very beneficial resource to have for this particular exercise. And so do recommend approval of this.
Thank you, Eric. I'll take NV5 as the consultant for this.
Well, we could have put your money with what we've already approved to cover the total.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, it's already budgeted. So it should already be included.
So it's within in the amount of what you're doing?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in the budget, Stephen. There's also an in-kind.
Was it debated? I'm just asking, then they know what we have put into the budget.
No, it's not. There's also an in-kind budget, or they're using some in-kind with HPC to take care of the budget.
Yeah, they are. And, you know, I will add that part of the review was to make sure that each of the consultants who were submitting a bid could maximize the coverage for the number of properties they wanted to survey. And there's at least one or two that could not maximize this. And so this was one of the items that was taken into consideration, and they feel like NV5 can get the job done.
I guess my only other question is that we had six bids. We should only show two. Were everybody else around the 14, five price range? I think I've asked a couple of times when we do the bid process to see, you know, the range. I mean, we only got the lowest bid and the highest bid.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll ask Barbara to kind of expand on that. But I will say that there was a low bid of $11,000 that was rejected because the firm, the review committee did not think that the firm could get the job done. But I'll let Barbara kind of expand on that a little bit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We did have six applicants. Two of them we discarded because one could only do 50 parcels for the $14,000 in some odd dollars. The other one could do 350 parcels for the $14,000. So we had four left. Three were at the $14,000 that we had budgeted. And like city manager, Mr. Taylor, said, we had one that is a low bid, but with their resources, their experience, they just did not measure up to this NV5 that all three of us. We read our reports separately and did a scoring sheet, and we all three came back with the same company to recommend to the council. They can do all 441. They can also give us some technical support. They are going to teach us how to use the narcissist where we can go in. And like I said, he's a native of Social Circle, so he knows a lot of people here and the history behind Social Circle. So they're really wanting to get a section done on the Native American and the African American history. So we're going to be interviewing people that know the story, so that we can document the story. So we felt like they could do the best job. And the in-kind money, we actually got more money than we applied for. The original was like $7,908, and they came back and gave us $10,252. Now that would make our 40% match go up, but we don't have to pay any extra money. We're going to do it in kind. So everything that we spend on the project, the commission members, myself, the city manager, we all get to claim that as that extra $1,700 that we would have had to pay in money. We do not have to. It'd be in kind. So it would be the same $5,000 that was budgeted, $5,272 that was budgeted in the approval process.
I recognize Councilmember Jackson's request, and I think going forward on anything we have bid on, I think it's the desire of the council to see all of those bids and how we came to the conclusion that we did.
We can do that. They all, and I have them here. If anybody wants to take a set home, they can, because we have three sets. And you can take a set home with you and read through these if you'd like and pass them around. I did not scan these in because they did not send them digitally. From now on, we're going to ask digital also, because we would have to take all these apart and make everybody a copy. So we just didn't do that at the time. We only got this last week, and we're kind of already a month behind because of the state. They had a problem with their software, and then they would not extend our due dates of getting the survey done. But I would be glad to pass these around if anybody would like to take them home. I have some at City Hall, so.
Thank you, Barbara. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That concludes our business for this afternoon. We do have the need for an executive session to talk about personnel, so I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Go ahead.
A motion and a second. Discussion. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.